I'll call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we have been doing for several years, we will take a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would like to join us in this moment of reflection, please feel free to do so. Thank you. Stand for pledge of allegiance. Now I would like to ask Councilwoman Marissa Sax if you would lead us in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. We have three public hearings tonight. The first is a conditional use permit request by Safe Haven Family Services, Inc., agent for Quorum Holding Corporation for a single-family residential dwelling at 2175 Palmer Street Northeast, tax map number 466-A-17, in the B3 general business zoning district. The property is designated as business commercial for the future land use map of 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and address, and podium's over there.
Yes, my name is Stephen Crawford. I'm the CEO and owner of Safe Haven Family Services. And through my research, my understanding, in 2002, this particular property was already licensed and approved by the city to have a group home there. All I'm doing is re- basically bringing up this issue again, hoping since it had been transferred over to several different businesses, it can be transferred back to a dwelling for a group home and to support the intellectually disabled individuals. We offer a variety of different services. This is ideal for this type of business with the rec center right across the street. There are doctors right down the street, the Corrady Doctors, the Aquatic Center. It's just a very central location, and I think it would be able to do well there at that location.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
I have no question. He says it's going to be a group home.
Yes.
How many persons you think will be staying there at one time?
No more than four, if licensed or for license.
Thank you. Second is a public hearing on the water sewer rate increase fiscal year 2018, 2019. I believe we have advertised an increase of $1 per thousand gallons.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone here to address that? Hearing no one, I will close that portion of the public hearing. The annual budget fiscal year 2018, 2019. Randy, you want to give us this in office, or we just open for questions?
Basically, it is balanced budget. We are proposing no tax increase. Of course, it does include the water and sewer increases, includes the recycling changes. We are adding a new bus service route as a trial route, pilot route, Renick and Bradford route. Insurance changes, paying portion of family insurance for town employees. Those are some of the major changes.
Okay. Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing section. We'll move to consent agenda. Under the agenda, there are council meeting minutes of May 28th, May 8th, 2018, and May 16th, 2018. The monthly bills, contract with Cardino for facilities assessment services, and a contract with ABS Technology for data backup and recovery.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, yes, sir?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll add that an email from Ms. Sax, is it going to comment on that, or are you going to comment on it?
I can.
We're in discussion. Well, I'm going to say that I'm going to vote for the, I'm going to vote to pay the bills, but I think you make a very good point. And after your explanation, I hope that people will look further into this.
Thank you. Just to address everybody who may or may not have gotten the email. I did review the bills, and I did notice that an awful lot of our funding is going outside of the town and outside of our county. I feel we can do a much better job with that, and I'd like to open up discussions at some point in the near future concerning that. The vendors have already provided services, so I agree that they need to be paid. I don't feel like I can deny that. But going forward, I feel like we can be a little bit more fiscally responsible to support local. And one of the reasons behind that is also it's the business community that does pay a lot of our taxes, which makes a lot of our revenue for the town, which is part of our budget. And if we spend money outside of our county, that money isn't coming back to our budget. You know, the vendors in Rhode Island and the vendors in Maryland, they don't pay for football programs. They don't support mom and dad being hired, and so on and so on. So I feel like we need to be a little bit more responsible in our procurement to keep more money local. And so I'd like to open that up and discuss it further and perhaps make a few improvements on that. So, thank you.
And she eloquently, I'll follow up with one brief comment. She eloquently followed up. It's obvious that her comments could be, appear to be self-serving because she is a local business owner. But during my last campaign cycle, I heard this a lot, why, just to make sure that our system is fair, our purchasing system is fair, but that we also are really, for smaller type stuff especially, we should be making use of our local businesses to the extent that, you know, to the extent we can. But I want to speak on your behalf, getting to know you, but your comments could appear to be self-serving, but I don't take them that way because of what I've heard from the community. We should be buying as local as we can and supporting our local businesses because that money is rippling through our own economy.
That's right.
Okay.
You know, I would agree with that, too. I also ran last fall, and you know, that's one of the things that's on people's mind is trying to work with people within the community and support different operations within the community. And I think your point's really well made, and I'm glad you brought it up.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with it, but what's the next process for that, Randy?
If you are to do business with Ms. Sax because she's on council, there's really only two ways we could do business with her company, and that's specific to her business if you're talking to businesses in general.
In general.
In general. I mean, I'm taking myself off the table because I don't want any conflict. What my comments are strictly for is for all the businesses in Christiansburg. And then if Christiansburg can't suffice, keep it Montgomery County. And if Montgomery County can't suffice, then of course, outside.
We are kind of, I guess, a little bit, I guess, hamstrung by Virginia procurement law. If it is a small purchase, then we could do it by three, basically three bids and taking the low bid. But we'd be tied to taking the low bid. We couldn't necessarily dictate whether it's a local firm or not. I don't think we can vary from that. If it is, you know, request for proposal for professional service, then you're tied to selecting the most qualified candidate for the work. So then basically it's strictly qualifications that you're supposed to consider. So like I say, to some degree, we're hamstrung by Virginia state laws to who we do business with. Typically, we're basically scared to do business with low bidder if it's a small purchase.
Well, that, my comments were to the extent practical.
Yes.
We should look local if we can, and I understand the state laws, especially for professional services. But the idea is...
You know, as far as internal policies, that we try to make sure we always have at least one local bid or something like that. I think we can always try to do that. I think we do try to do that. Like I say, I think those type things we can try to do, kind of to help out local businesses. But of course, we do have to follow Virginia procurement law, though. We don't really have any options in that regard.
What is the threshold for the three bids? Is there a dollar, $2,000, $5,000, $10,000?
I believe it's...
$10,000?
$10,000.
Up to, it's just a quote, three quotes.
Yeah, it goes all the way up...
Everything over that, we go to more formal process.
Yeah, it goes all the way up to $100,000.
Yeah.
But there's varying, there's different levels of how many quotes that you need to get. I think something that might be very helpful is maybe as part of the, maybe if someone went to the Chamber of Commerce, I don't think we get, how many responses do we actually get from local businesses when we advertise? Because that, it may be a lack of just not having the people actually respond to the solicitations. There could be all kinds of...
Yeah.
One thing we could do is with our business license renewal, we could include a mailer or something, or maybe when they come in to renew their business license, give them a sheet, basically just telling them our procurement policies. And also maybe point on our website that our bids are posted on our website. I'm sure probably a few local businesses might not necessarily know that.
Well, they can register for the note if I need.
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
I think it's something that we definitely could work on, whether it's communication, marketing, or a change of what we even do, it would be very helpful.
If we're buying hammers or flowers or whatever, long mower blades or whatever we're buying, yeah. I mean, I don't want to be a big point of discussion, but I think it's a good point, and I would like to be able to look at our local business owners and say, we're doing everything we can help you possibly do to help you succeed on a level playing field. Well, when I say level playing field, we should look local first if we can, when we can. And if people don't respond, at least we're doing what we can do.
Very good. Any further discussions? I will say that what I would hope that we consider in the very near future is that we need to come up with a set of purchasing rules for departmental shirts, whatever. We need to make sure we have a, I think we need a standard, this is what kind of shirt you can buy for every, whatever your department is, whether it be a 32 count, a 96 count, thread count, whatever. We need to be consistent so that when we do, if we do and when we do put these things out to bid, then, you know, we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. It could be the thread count of the T-shirts, it could be any one of a thousand things that, but I think that, you know, I had almost decided tonight that I would suggest we just issue a temporary ban on ordering any kind of logo shirts for any of our departments, but I don't think I want to go that far yet. I think Randy has talked to me, and I think we discussed this earlier, that he has a, he's getting a procurement contract, one such as in place at Virginia Tech. And I think it is pretty, apparently it is pretty widespread and pretty inclusive of this, this, and this. And it may be something we need to take a look at for down the road because I see any number of different style of logos within the various departments, with the exception of Public Works because we do provide those uniforms as part of, as part of the package. So, but anyway, it's something that we can consider. I think as soon as Randy can get that information, and maybe we can, we can get it out and review it to council, then maybe we can sit down and make a more, a more educated directive of what we feel like we would like to do. So...
Is this something that the finance committee would want? Would that fit our, to review?
It's a major's question.
I don't want to throw a work session and get the grumbles coming from here, but I would like to find out more about it.
I had thought maybe after we take a look at it and have a chance to discuss it, maybe to put a committee together of council, not necessarily finance, but possibly finance and the department heads, with the ones that are normally buying most of those things, just to review, is this is what we're looking at? This is what we feel that you need to go to? And carry it from there, see what comes up. So, thank you, Marissa. I appreciate that, your comments on this.
I asked one, can you two work together? I know you got a lot on your plate, to just get something out to us, sort of to, I mean, you explained some procurement laws through Virginia tonight, and at least get us moving. So if we do want to make a work session here in the next few months, we can do that. And I think it's something council can sit down and decide and give you a direction, as long as it's legal.
Yeah, the only thing in the Virginia code, there's a by Virginia preference if there's like a tie for bids and stuff, but you're pretty much, you know, anything over $100,000 for, you know, regular services and goods, you know, has to go by, strictly by the Virginia Public Procurement Act. You have a small purchase under that. And anything that's over, what is it, 80 or 60? I think it's raised to 80 now, the, on the professional services, has to go through, you know, the full-blown RFP process. And so when you advertise those things, you get advertisements from all over the, all over the place, and you have to pick the best value with the city. So it really comes down to qualifications and, you know, price and that sort of thing. So you're kind of like stuck. But on the small purchase procedure, then we might be able to do something on that end. And I'll take a look and see what other localities may have.
Thank you regardless. I think once we get this procurement thing, and possibly it might be a, the possibilities of a good work session to sit down with Kim Widgert, who is our, basically our purchasing agent, to let her explain. I know that she had a meeting with some of the merchants in town and explained all of this to him. But I think it would be good for town, for the council, to have a, an idea of this is, this is what we do, this is how we do it, and this is when we do this. So maybe that's something we don't have to schedule in the next couple of weeks, but something in the, in the near future, once we can all digest this document that Randy has requested that we receive. So I think maybe that could do it. So, are there any other questions or comments? Then I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk. Would you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
5-0, thank you. This is a citizens' portion, citizens' comment portion of the agenda. If you... 5-0, that's right, Harry's not here. That's all, Harry's all. Okay. He would have probably voted for...
Probably.
I've never seen him vote against him, but anyway, we do 5-0 and one absent. This is a citizens' comments portion where if you would like to address council on any matter of concern, we ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address. If you would address your comments to the chair, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address council?
My name is Bob Leonard. I live in Blacksburg, 305 Bishop Road in Blacksburg. I chair the board directors of Christiansburg Institute Incorporated, and I speak on behalf of that board tonight to make a statement that is jointly endorsed by both Christiansburg Institute Alumni Association and C.I.A. We thank town council for your time and effort in considering community applications. A lot goes into preparing the applications on our end, and I know that a lot goes into thoughtful deliberations on yours. We recognize the importance of building a healthy and professional working relationship between C.I.A. and the town of Christiansburg. Our goal is to foster transparent processes of communication, structures of accountability, and to build bridges of mutual understanding around shared goals individually. In honoring our shared commitment to truth-telling, we find it necessary and appropriate to provide context and clarity regarding several inaccurate and/or misinformed statements made about our organization's financial history and how we've used funding from the town of Christiansburg in the past. The town's grant application process for external agencies requires submission of a complete application packet to the town's director of finance. Included in the application packet are documents that fully disclose how previous town money was spent and how town money will be spent in the current grant request. Documentation of our organization's use of town funds is readily available in each and all of our previous application packets. Per request of town council members, we have also submitted spreadsheets that clearly substantiate the application documents. For the record, the town of Christiansburg has funded C.I.A. for eight years, from 2007, '08 through 2014, '15, at $10,000 per fiscal year. We've used this money for two specific purposes, as was stated clearly in each year's application packet. For the first seven years, we received support for operational program costs. The eighth year, we received support for contracting with professional consultants. We are a small volunteer-based organization. We have had to focus on building our organizational capacity over many years. Key to our growth and reputation is a profound commitment to honest, transparent communication with everyone. We aspire to ambitious revitalization of our property on Spatterwood Drive, the Air Grand Lung Building. This is a long-term project. It is our strategy for this long-term endeavor to anchor ourselves in delivering worthwhile public programs every year, reliably building respect, allies, and our reputation. This is our annual program for which we have consistently requested general operating support from the town and other funding sources. Over the years, we have proven ourselves to be prudent in budget management, doing exactly what we say we will do within our available resources. In the eighth year of funding, we received town support for contracting with a professional consultant who aided us in developing clear strategies for advancing our long-term goal to revitalize the Air Grand Lung Building through community partnerships. This year's application is based on this vision and its commitment to partnership with the town. Should we be funded, we look forward to forming a formal authority with the town and other invested partners in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else here to address council? Hearing no one, I will close citizens' comments under introductions and presentations. April Kelly to present regarding Relay for Life. This is April. Kelly, do us a mic.
Hi, my name is April Kelly, and I am the staff partner for the American Cancer Society and the realtors of Montgomery County. I have two volunteers here with me today that live here in Montgomery, Pat Rall and Donna Christian. And we are just kind of here today to make sure that not only are we using our donor dollars properly to serve the community up here, but making sure that we're doing everything possible to do everything correctly for the town of Christiansburg. The Relay for Life is one of the biggest fundraisers that the American Cancer Society does have. We have 52 counties that do a Relay for Life, and over 50 countries that do a Relay for Life to serve cancer patients and to raise money for research to end cancer. We actually do have a sign and some posters, if we're allowed to put that out front, so we can kind of advertise for our event. Our event is next Friday on June 1st at the Christiansburg Middle School from 6 to midnight. So if you're ready to come out and join us and continue this fight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, no, this is, is David Moore here tonight to...
Yes, yes, yep.
There's David, he snuck in on me. Regarding Christiansburg Community Center.
To the mayor barber, to the town council, to Mr. Wingo and staff, good evening. Now I'm here to present the Old Hill School Community Center, to show you what we have been spending your money on with the act of more. Christiansburg Community Center is 125-year, probably voted in that Christiansburg landmark. For those of you who don't know, it's on 570 High Street, right next to the Shaker Memorial Baptist Church. It is going to be renamed as the Old Hill School Community Center, as everybody calls it anyway. So we applied with the state, and they said, okay, you go ahead and change your name. So we just going to be known as the Old Hill School Community Center. Our building is still in desperately need of repair, and we still have a lot of work to do. So you all know that our first floor, it was leaking very badly, actively raining inside the building. And that's where it looked bad, it was really bad. With your help, this is what we have now. And we have a nice roof, it is dry inside, now we can go inside and start rebuilding. So we thank you all for helping us get that built. This was our main meeting room before we did renovation. This is the main room that everybody comes in and have meetings in. This is what it looks like now. We took the roof back to its original height. You see the windows are no longer covered. It's back to the original height, we put wood on the roof. We got new lighting, we got fans. We even exposed these beams, which has a nice architectural feature at the top. If you have a photograph, take a look at it. So it's a really nice looking window there. It's a feature of the building. And that's another look at it with the lights on. You can see how nice this room is. It looks really good. And that's what we did last year, if you remember last year, we did that. Like we said, we still have work to do. We still want to replace these windows, refurbish these windows, not replace, refurbish these windows. So we know that doing the windows is going to be a long-term project. It's not something that's going to happen in one year. We have 34 windows in the building, and we have estimates it will cost $123,000 to get this done. We know that I can get all work done if we're done in one half. It's probably be a two-year kind of thing, we get them all done. So we know that's what, that's absolutely happening. Unless we get rich on, we'll come back somewhere. Something we want to do this year, this is a room upstairs, this is going to be a future meeting room. It should not take a lot to get this room into good shape. It's got some water damage up top, carpet needs to be replaced, and we've got some work on the windows that needs to be done. All the ceiling tiles need to be done. We moved, and one of the big headaches with placing ceiling tiles in this building is when they redid the building before and lowered the ceiling, they blow insulation on top of the ceiling tile. So if you take the ceiling tile out, all that insulation comes with it. So we have to take ceiling tile out, all the old insulation out, put in new insulation, put in new ceiling tiles. That's the biggest job in this room. But we're going to try to get that done this year if we can. This is another one of our rooms, it's going to take a lot of work. You can see the water damage from the roof in the past years, and how it's caused a lot of trouble. This is meeting room number three. The ceiling tiles are actually missing from the water damage, and it's really, really bad shape. The kitchen needs work. It's dated, it's got stains on the table, got stains on the counters. And it just looks unpleasant, you don't want to go in there and cook. So we want to fuck with it so people will want to go in there and use it. Our restrooms need to be handicap accessible. It's kind of easy for me to get in there, but if somebody comes up here who's in a wheelchair, they're not going to get in there. And that's something we really need to get done. Right now, with the roof and the meeting room, we're about 20% of where we want to be. We still got a long way to go, but with your help, we will get there. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, David. I will say that I have been to a couple of functions in the new, the new classroom, number one, and it's, I've been in it both times, and it's, it's really quite an improvement, quite an improvement. Marissa, I think you were there, were you there in that one recently?
Yeah, I was in the basement, though.
Okay.
Which was scary.
That's where the kitchen is, right?
Yeah.
That's where we do their work, so.
I would agree with that, for sure.
But it is, we have very evidence of the money well spent so far.
Yeah.
Have you got any plans for any fundraising coming up in the near future?
$100,000 type fundraising, we do not have yet.
Even, even a small thing, though?
Oh, small things, we do our golf fest every year, we just finish that up in May.
Okay.
And that helps us out. And we're thinking about having a place, thought, a community play, to have people come to it. So we're working on some things.
It's my understanding that this building, once it's completed, will be open to the public to use, correct?
Almost definitely. The main meeting hall is open right now.
Okay.
We do have, we do have regular meetings in the community center, so the ACP needs to be placed once a month, the rotunda. So the building is being used, and we do also have our... So the building is being used, and we do also have our leadership down there. And so we'll be working on plans for big money.
Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Wayne Nelson to introduce Dr. William Nocke.
Dr. Nocke, yes.
Dr. Nocke, the NRV Regional Water Authority Board Member at Large Appointment.
Good morning, mayor, good evening, council. Last council meeting resulted in council approving Dr. William Nocke as at-large representative to the NRV Regional Water Authority Board. I know how important it is for council to meet the new appointed board and council committee members, so for that reason, I apologize for being out of town at the last meeting. Being on the board during the changes that resulted from the joint, one of the most significant changes that has taken place is the appointment of Virginia Tech Civil Engineering Department professor as an at-large representative. This has proven invaluable during board meeting discussions with the technical knowledge they bring to the meetings. When I called Dr. Nocke and invited him to this meeting tonight, I expressed my pleasure that he might serve on the board, whose reply to me was that he brings our water too, and so does his grandchildren. That really rung with me because I think in nine days, I'm going to be a granddad. His impressive resume speaks for itself. Dr. Nocke has published and has received many awards. He's been on BT's Virginia Tech faculty for 39 years. He may not remember this, but he taught me water supply engineering when I was a senior at Tech. So town council, please let me introduce Dr. William Nocke.
Well, thank you, Wayne, that's very nice comments. I don't have any prepared comments, I'd be happy to take any questions to that. As Wayne said, I've been here now, this is my 40th year at Virginia Tech. My technical emphasis is water and wastewater treatment, and so most of my coursework that I teach every year is focused on water treatment. I made the comment to Brad before the meeting started, that I think I've given more tours of the local water treatment plant probably than anybody, at least who doesn't work there, because I take a class out there every semester. I also, Virginia Tech allows us to do a small amount of technical consulting on the side, so I do have worked with dozens of consulting firms, water utilities, big, small, on treatment issues. That's what I know, and we've been, I think, blessed in this area for many years to have a strong staff, strong leadership there, and I look forward to working with the board going forward.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I'd like just a brief comment. We could probably, we, the town, and the New River Valley could probably not have a more qualified individual to represent our interests and to make sure that we're making good decisions at the board level than Dr. Nocke, and he's modest, he's a university distinguished professor who's taught many of us, has gone through the mill over the year. And he was also department head for civil engineering for 15 years, so... And he's also a ten handicap and golf signal, knows how to relax, too. But no, when your name was brought to us, I couldn't think of a better qualified individual, and we appreciate your willingness to serve at this level and may help us make the right decisions for going forward with our plant and distribute our... as our water wholesaler.
And the quality of our water is about as high as it can get, is that correct?
Yes, it is. One of the things that we are blessed with is a truly outstanding water source in the New River. I tell my students that unfortunately, they don't get to see a lot of high-power, high-gluten advanced treatment processes because we don't need it to treat our source here. If we were in the tight water area where we have much higher organic levels in the water and some other constituents, we would need more advanced treatment technologies than we have to have here. We have what we need, it functions quite effectively, so we have very high-quality water here.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks for coming by.
Is he a new member, or is he replacing a member at law?
He's a new member.
It's Tom Borpen is leading.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, to continue with the Wayne Nelson Show, we have Wayne Nelson Engineering Director to present regarding the Cambria Trail, a potential VDOT Smart Scale funded project. Mr. Nelson?
Localities around the state are currently completing project applications for VDOT Smart Scale funding program. I've been asked to present the Cambria Trail project as a potential project for this funding, which is funded at a full 100%. Source for this presentation is a trail study recently completed by Hurt and Prophet, one of the town's transportation consultants. One of the eight corridor study with recommended improvements was a trail along Cambria Street and Depot Street, which for the purposes of this presentation, I'll refer to that as the Cambria Trail. The magenta rub here is the trail that I will discuss. It extends from North Franklin Street in the recreation center, down Cambria Street, Depot Street, connecting to Roanoke Street near Kornis Park. There seems to be two branches here. This was an original proposed location here at the Cambria intersection, but as part of the Smart Scale project currently under design, it was determined that a pedestrian crosswalk at this intersection would be detrimental to traffic flow. So what has happened is we have proposed a new signal here, which aligns with a future connector road. There will be pedestrian accommodations at that location, which will allow connection to this leg right here, which is...
Central Avenue.
Central Avenue, thank you, thank you. Central Avenue will connect to Cambria Street and extend to Depot Street. This is the proposed improvements. The trail section would be typical throughout the entire project, when adjacent to the street, you have a 10-foot asphalt trail, curb and gutter, and you'll have a 5-foot green area, buffer strip between your trail and the back of the curb. Along Cambria Street, we'll be able to reduce the lane width to 10 feet, excuse me, 12 feet, to reduce the need for additional right-of-way. The side benefit of that would be a potential traffic calming measure, and also an opportunity for street scape improvements. Along Depot Street, there are no planned lane width reductions. Graphic on the left is typical of the improvements along Cambria Street between up to Ellot Road. There's no curb and gutters, the shoulders, shoulder section, which we would add curb and gutter and storm drain and the trail. This is typical from Ellot Road to the rail crossing. We have sidewalk on both sides, the lane width would be reduced, we would install the trail on this west side, and we would also plan to replace the curb and gutter and sidewalk on the east side because it's in a very high state of deterioration. I will point out that when the town replaced the bridge in Cambria about 15 years ago, we stubbed the storm drain out down here for this very reason. Cambria Street in this section has no storm drain inlets at all, so part of this project would be to extend the storm drain and provide a collection system along the street. This is the most challenging portion of the project here. We would need to get the trail across the two Norfolk-Southern rails all the time, the incognizant of the whistle band that is grandfathering for this crossing. Signal modifications with a pedestrian gate would be required here. Extending the trail around the Cambria toy station would be another challenge. That is going to require some additional study. Again, this is the proposed route here in Cambria through the square of Depot Street. I will point out that this yellow extension is the extension from Cambria Square to the future passenger rail station to Mill Lane. This is typical along Depot Street. No lane width restriction here. We would add curb and gutter and the trail, but adjacent to the Norfolk-Southern workyard down there, we would need to install retaining walls because of the drop-off in grade here. The view here is the connection, eventual connection to the sidewalk on Roanoke Street. I wanted to point out that recently, we've had discussions with Norfolk Southern Real Estate about the potential to acquire the Norfolk Southern right-of-way. And near, just, I think, just east of Lester Street, there's a, when you drive Depot, you'll see it, there's a pull-out. That's the approximate location where we would, if we were so fortunate to be able to retain that right-of-way, we would deviate the trail off of Depot Street and put it on this, what's now essentially abandoned rail bed. And we would extend the trail up the old rail bed to Roanoke Street. We would cross Park Street, tie into our new sidewalks there, we just constructed. And then, at this location, we could then be looking at how to get the trail over to Here's the cost summary. Cambria Street is estimated at $2.5 million. That includes $420,000 estimated for sidewalk improvements on the east side of Cambria to complete that entire project. The Depot Street extension, that portion is $2.25 million. That does not include the right-of-way needed if we were to purchase that from Norfolk Currently, right now, up to June 1, we are inputting projects into VDOT's Smart Scale application program. Pre-applications are due by June 1. Final applications of which, four, we can apply for four projects maximum. Those are due on August 1. Our other projects that we're currently inputting is the Parkway Drive extension to South Franklin Street. We previously had applied, and that previous estimate was at $11.49 million. The North Franklin Street, Depot Street intersection upgrade, previously estimated at $2.9 million. And the North Franklin, Pepper Street Road connector route, previously estimated at $24 We currently are working with one of our seasoned transportation engineers to assist us with these Smart Scale applications. We have really learned a lot, how important it is to get it right at this stage. VDOT is unforgiving. When you get to construction and you run out of money, it will have to come out of our own pocket. So it's vital at this stage that we scope these projects well and make sure we have all of our costs covered in here. I'm ready to input this, council's will, into the system. We plan to run this, these pre-applications through preliminary polling, just to see how we do, and we're going to work harder this year than ever before to improve our score with all our projects at least. It is quite an interesting process that VDOT has developed here. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to make a quick comment. I apologize to Mr. Wingfield and Mr. Nelson for basically dumping this on you. In my day job, obviously, I practice in this area, and I actually help other localities. I don't do any business here in Christiansburg, but I help other localities with this very same thing. One thing I did not realize until recently was the Transportation Enhancement Program that VDOT has had for probably 20 years, it has different names, it's called IIST, T-21, Transportation Enhancements, but the Transportation Enhancement Program that's funded most of our Huckleberry Trail improvements so far is now being handled through the Smart Scale Program, and I did not know that. So it was sort of a sense of urgency that came about in the last couple of weeks because this program that I was not aware that Transportation Enhancements was also being funneled through this Smart Scale Program. If we don't put this in, it's two years till we can ask again. And bicycle pedestrian facilities are in vogue right now. VDOT loves them, people love them, so we have nothing to lose by putting our application in for this, except to be told no. The only thing we have to lose is some time, and I'll personally offer you, anything I can do to help you and your staff, I will do on my own time. I'd be happy to do that, but I do apologize for the late notice, but it basically came about because the Transportation Enhancement money that's funded most of our Huckleberry Trail is now being funneled through this process, and so that's why I wanted to get this, or I suggested that the town council get behind this because it's 100% funding too. So that's a little background. I do apologize to you all, and I'll also help you any way I can.
No problem. Okay.
I don't have half of Brad's knowledge of this, but I was impressed when I heard you several times talk about funding and talking about how we're going to try to watch our money, and so that we are not going to get overextended, and I think all council appreciates, you know, that kind of an attitude about this, and of course, this thing does look like a wonderful project.
VDOT is going through some change, and we just had to webinar recently, and the revenue sharing program, the TA program. The benchmark used to be, at what point are you going to advertise for construction? That was the only benchmark. That is all changed, that's changing, that's July 1. Everything is going to be public, it's going to be on their website, there's going to be benchmarks, every way, at every step along the way, from scoping to signing contracts with your engineers, you have a schedule, and it needs to be right, and they will, they're going to hold you, your toes to fire, and I don't mind that at all. I like that accountability. Kind of makes your job easier in a way. You've got a carrot out there, you got to hit it. Interesting process, and I think some of the other state agencies could learn things too, but that's just my opinion.
Wayne, are you asking for the Parkway and the North Franklin?
Wayne, are you asking for the Parkway and the North Franklin? There's two there, and this would be one, the combined?
Yeah, we, that, this, this project would be the fourth.
These three, well, these three we've already committed to.
Okay, but we need, we'd like to do one more.
That's what the request is before council, is, is council is in favor of submitting this project also for potential funding for the trail extension.
Sure, yeah, you don't catch any fish if you throw the hook in the water, do you want? Very good.
You know, I'd like to say one more thing. The stream restoration that your people worked on all last winter, and I had not been down there, and I went down there about two weeks ago, and if people have not had a chance to go down there, I think it was very impressive. The whole area's really changed, and it's really, the Depot Park and the skate park are connected, and they have done a lot of work down there, of course, the stream has been restored, and I was just really impressed, and I, I think you guys are going to put in another bridge, maybe to connect the Aquatic Center, but, you know, in my opinion, you guys just did a great job, and, and you've got trees planted, and it's, it's just going to look really good, I think, in the future, and I, for one, I appreciate it.
I'll pass that credit on to my staff, but it really did change a blighted area into really a destination. It's really quite a transformation down there. You haven't had to change to walk that little trail.
It's nice.
And Parks and Rec has done a great job with the playground there and the walking track around it, and, you know, in the last 10 years, that place has just so changed. I remember when I first got on council, that was the place they did drugs, and, and now it is just, it is just a place, and you see families down there, that's just a compliment, I think, to all these different departments of what we've made Depot Park, you know, into.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Wayne, thank you. Any committee reports?
I do, yeah, okay. Central Business Committee met, we discussed the opportunity zones by Governor Norton and how it affects us. We're still pulling some information together with Andrew's help. We discussed briefly the closing of Hickok Street and how it impacts our neighbors. Andrew discussed the funders forum recap, which was great. We, we also discussed the ongoing problem of parking, which I'd love to share a great solution, but currently there isn't a magic answer for that. And then New Business, we did briefly discuss the opportunity for meals abatement to help some of our local restaurants get business on days that they're normally not busy. It's a pilot program that Withville started, and we're looking to see how we can integrate that, hopefully, and gather more business for the local industry. We also had a joint meeting between Central Business and the Street Committee, mainly the discussion with this was the closing of Hickok and how it potentially affected the neighbors, including Christiansburg Presbyterian Church. I thought we had a lot of good back and forth, made a great amount of progress, and we do plan to meet back up again May 31, if anybody is interested, 6:30. That is the extent of the committee update that I have.
Thank you. Any other committees to report? Thank you. Reappointment of Barry Helms to the Montgomery Regional Solid West Authority Board of Directors for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2018. Mr. Helms is here tonight, be glad to answer any questions. For those that may not know, Mr. Helms. So do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second to reappoint Mr. Helms.
Yes.
Any discussion? Thank you. Madam Clerk, 5-0.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Thank you. May, can I ask? Okay. The, the agenda, the flow of the agenda was adjustment of the agenda, the forward of public hearings, but if, if I might, could we, I'd like to suggest we take action for Safe Haven Family Services tonight, since there was no one speaking against it. The Planning Commission unanimously supported, or they voted in favor of this conditional use permit, but I didn't bring it up before because I was interested to see what the public hearing would say. If it's council's pleasure, I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and take action on this tonight.
So move, or second?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I will say that there was no one that spoke against it at the Planning Commission public hearing either, and it was passed 8-0. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
5-0 and 1, thank you.
Likewise, make a motion that we go ahead and approve the conditional use permit as presented to us by the Planning Commission and supported unanimously.
Does it's a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second, motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor.
I was just going to ask that question, I'm glad you did, thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Any council reports? Mr. Bishop, Mr. Collins is not with us tonight, Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Showalter?
I do not have anything.
Mr. Stipes?
A brief one, I'm glad Mr. Terry Caldwell is here. I would like to thank her for hiring such wonderful staff, and I told Ms. Claire Mann, who, I'm a graduate, a recent graduate of the Adult Learn to Swim class, and I want to publicly tell our folks that's on, watching video, and folks that are here, that if you're scared of water, or don't know how to swim, or it's been 35 years, like it has been in my case, they, she has an outstanding staff, and the Learn to Swim program down there is fantastic. I'm still struggling with the freestyle, but I can do most everything else, and I'm forever indebted, it's just a wonderful experience, but I want to make a plug for Aquatic Center to staff, and also to save lives by learning to swim, or for exercise. Obviously, weight loss is an issue of mine I need to deal with, but swimming is a great way, but I want to lift you up and your staff by, specifically, I told Ms. Mann I was going to make a public plug for that, so our community, get out there and swim, and if you don't know how, we've got some great people to help you learn. Thank you.
That's a great program.
It's fantastic.
There's a lot of people out there who are adults who can't swim. I have a lot of coworkers that, so.
Mr. Hubbard?
I just wanted to wish everybody having a good Memorial Day weekend, and make sure it's safe, and so you're here next week. Thank you.
I wanted to go on the record and state that since our last work session, for anybody who follows it, we had some discussion on the budget, and I had an opinion concerning Christiansburg Institute. I have since been able to talk to Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Leonard, and we had some really good discussion back and forth, and some of the information that I used to base my decisions off of was incorrect, and so I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. I was able to dive into those concerns, and it made the world of difference. I did change my opinion. So I do have more support for Christiansburg Institute now based on the new information, and I just wanted to publicly state that change and that correction. So thanks for helping me and educating me as well.
I will say that Monday night, Memorial, Memorial Day, 6:30, the VFW and the American Legion are sponsoring the annual memorial service at the, at Sunset Cemetery, beginning at 6:30. I haven't heard weather permitting, but hopefully that those of you here will be able to attend. Also, tomorrow night, Barry, is that the Virginia Tech thing?
Barry?
Barry, I'm sorry.
Mark tomorrow night.
Any of you going to that smart?
Which one?
Over Tech. They're kind of giving their 20-year projection on what the campus will look like and changes.
Presentation of their master plans.
It's interesting, if nobody's been over to it, to see what you, they've been very assertive or aggressive the past few years, and it's, it's pretty neat what they, they've got planned for over there.
All right, so that's at 6-ish?
6 o'clock.
I know Mr. Wingfield and I are going to attend, I, I think we were all invited to this, okay, so I'll get with you tomorrow, liaison meeting in the morning at Marriott in Blacksburg, is that correct? Okay. Courtyard Marriott, okay. Very good, that's all I have.
There is a meeting, well, tomorrow, the first meeting of the, the first of two, if I'm correct, Melissa, is the Kripzod Recycling Community Meetings for the summer. There's a meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, 5:30 to 7:00 for education and community input, I take it?
Correct.
All right, and then there's another one that will occur June 5th from 5:30, 7:00 at, here in Town Hall. So anybody who has any questions about that, definitely attend one of those meetings. So exciting program, we're looking forward to. And thank you for putting up the signs, those are great.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Request for closed meeting in accordance with Code of Virginia subsection 2.2-3711 parentheses 3 for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real estate where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting pertains to discussions regarding potential recreational property in Montgomery County, as well as potential public works property in Montgomery County. I guess that's a motion.
Second.
Get a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 5-0 and 1, so we're going to take about a three, four-minute break to clerk council chambers, and I will call a speeding back to order in five minutes after. Okay. What he said, we'll read it to you later. So we are out of, out of closed session, we have a motion to come out of, a motion for certification?
All motion.
Got a motion, got a second? Okay, use the second.
I'll second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 5-0 and 1, and council is not going to take any action on any of the matters that we talked about tonight, any formal action on. I was reminded, rudely reminded, that I skipped the town manager's report.
The only thing I've got is, is just going to ask if it's okay if I go ahead and publicize to the employees the proposed employee contributions with the insurance.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I think it's pretty close.
Obviously, there is contention on the budget being adopted, but we'll make sure it's...
Well, because it always takes a while to explain those things with departmental meetings, I think we should at least get it started subject to approval. Madam Attorney?
I have nothing.
Any other staff? Hearing none. Is there anything else to come before council? We are adjourned, thank you very much.